I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. We had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera at the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joe Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nano2 Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the live speakers, not in your ears, you don't put earbuds in, and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so, you know, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. You know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there'd be some, you know, strong investment opportunities for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera at the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so I'm like, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is...
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council, called Need to Order. And as always, Town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and it is our privilege to be here. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. Most of the agenda, please. Deputy Mayor Fager, seconded by Councilor Caldwell, all those in favor? Opposed? Most is carried. We're a light crew today, just for the public who are watching at home. We have a number of councillors away today, 'tis the season, but it makes my job easier because I just have to face this way, I don't have to do this all the time. You know, I'll take it for the day. Are there any announcements from members of council, deputy mayor?
Yes, Your Worship. I'll just remind the public that the Bridgewater Nario Chamber of Commerce AGM is this coming Friday at the Osprey Golf Course. It's free breakfast for the chamber members, but there is a RSVP reply on the website if you could do so kindly if you're planning to come, so hope to see you there.
Great. This Wednesday, the 14th of June, from 2:00 to 4:00, at the Desperse Museum is Welcome Wednesdays. These will be happening every other week until the end of, I believe it's the end of August, or 26th of August. So this is put on by the South Shore Refugee Project, of course with support from the Desperse Museum. So that's open to anyone who's new to the province, new to our community, so if you want to go, you can meet Rebecca there, who's our community navigator, and she can tell you all about the community that you now live in. This, I think, one of the topics this week is waste collection, which sounds easy, but you know, if you're new, then sorting, and recycling, and compost and stuff, so it'll be good, but you'll get to meet other newcomers who are new to the area. So that's what, this Wednesday from 2:00 to 4:00, the Desperse Museum. Any other announcements? Hearing none, we'll go to delegations. So we have representatives from Nova Scotia Power here to talk about the grid-scale battery project. So, welcome, and I'll invite you down to the podium, or wherever you'd like to sit. Yeah, at the, perfect, the table's...
Might as well join the table.
Might as well. I'll just let you introduce yourselves. I mean, I feel like we just had this, just talked about this, and councillors just talked about this, but introduce yourself and let you go through it.
Awesome. Well, thanks for having us again. Glad to be back in Bridgewater. Another beautiful day. I think the last time we drove down here, it was gorgeous too, so as long as you guys have beautiful days, we come over and over again.
Yeah, it is actually always like this.
It seems that way. So my name's Susan Smith. I am stakeholder lead with Nova Scotia Power and working with Deborah on these grid-scale battery projects that's being proposed for your community. So my job is really to be the point of contact for community members, stakeholders, council members like yourself, if any questions, comments, or concerns are coming your way about these projects. But we're looking forward to kind of going through more details about these with you, and I'll turn it over to Deborah.
Hey, good evening. My name's Deborah McCollum. I'm project manager for the grid battery projects.
Okay. Let me click the arrow. There we go. So yeah, like I said, we're here to talk about grid-scale battery projects. And really, where this project stems from is this whole clean energy transition that we're embarking on as a province. So as you know, by 2030, we have to reach 80% renewables. We also have to phase out coal by 2030. So this is, you know, the largest energy transition that Nova Scotia has seen. So we have lots of work to do, and these grid-scale battery projects are ways, is a way to help us enable these projects and enable more renewables and get to those, get to those goals. So we know that through our integrated resource planning process, that a mix of energy solutions is needed to help us get to these targets. And our IRP is a collaborative process where stakeholders, partners, the energy community, and our regulator work together to forecast solutions for our long-term energy needs. So grid-scale batteries, like the one that we're proposing in this community, will support this transition and help us enable the integration of renewables. So to get more into the nitty-gritty about batteries, I'll pass it over to Deborah.
Okay, just to quickly go through some background, so we previously completed some study prior to starting the development work on these larger grid-scale battery projects. So there was a project called Intelligent Feeder Pilot, and that had a Tesla power pack installed in one of our substations in Elmsdale. So that took place a few years ago. It was, the work was completed in 2017, and it gave us the chance to test it for a few years. It's not too far from a small, from some wind turbines. So it was grid-connected, and it allowed our Energy Control Center and project team to test some of the use cases and benefits that we could get from larger batteries. And we've done some other projects with commercial scale, as well as some residential batteries, but that would have been the larger one that helped pave the way to getting to this point with the larger projects. Some of the benefits of batteries, just to highlight very, very high level, they do support, as Susan said, it's really enabling our energy transition to more renewables. And some of the benefits are, with batteries, it's very, very quick response. With what we're specifying for these sites, it would be under 200 milliseconds. So if there's any disruptions on the grid to help support changes, because with renewables, you can have, you know, changes in conditions that can happen very quickly, so the batteries are very, very quick response. And that could be in response to renewables, or if there's an issue like we had with some of the ice storms and impacts that they can have online. So it'll just help overall reliability as well, being able to react very quickly. So this would enable renewables, and also different use cases and impacts that can happen on the grid. The batteries will be very quick to respond. I think the next line, okay, great. So we are looking, rather than have one single larger site, because if you locate the batteries in different areas where they can support different grid functions, we're actually looking at three separate locations for these projects. So one would be in Bridgewater, another in Kings County, and the other would be just outside the city of Halifax, but still within HRM. Just to give a general update on where we are with the project development activities, we did have a request for proposals that went out last year. And when Bill 212 came in last fall, there was a bit of uncertainty around our capital spending and what capability we would have with all of the other capital project requirements. So we did take a pause at that time to evaluate and see how we could move forward. We did receive $130 million of federal government funding. That is contingent on getting UARB approval, though. So we wanted to make sure we were looking at the most efficient business case to help the project proceed. So after taking that time, we were able to re-engage the proponents that had submitted proposals last year. That went out in April, and we're working through the evaluation now. So the project development work is proceeding. And also, at the same time, we're having some of these stakeholder discussions to give some information about the project in general, and what it could look like. We do not have our proponents selected at this time, but we're just getting everything in place so that we're ready to ramp up when we, when we get approval for the project. And, oh, just another comment there, sorry. So the planning work is in progress for pre-development, and depending on the timing of approvals and when we can get a filing in place, the earliest construction activity, it could potentially be in 2024, depending on how things move forward. So we do have our overall schedule, have a really good feel for the time that would take for construction, and then the long lead time orders. And we are completing the engineering work that we can have done in advance of actually outlaying those large payments that we would need approval to move forward with them. So this gives the general overview of the location. So we have an existing substation that the current entrance is just off of King Street, so it's not too far away. And as you can see in the overview there, so the, it's that green triangle area, even though the batteries, and we have some renderings coming up, they're basically shipping container-sized containers that are in series and in parallel with other supporting components beside them. But you can basically fit them within whatever footprint you have available. And from the proposals that we've received, this is more than adequate space with the current designs that they have available. So it wouldn't actually be a triangle, it would be more of a rectangle there, but that was the available space. And also wanted to mention that we're looking into, with the current access that is off King Street, there's a couple of residents in the vicinity, and the roadway basically is through the driveway entrance and then extends past the property. So we are actually looking into having a new proposed access so we wouldn't be, especially during construction, when there would be a fair amount of trucks coming and going. We are pursuing, looking at that alternate access, coming in through our existing right-of-way, and we have the land on the other side. So we are looking into that just to minimize any potential safety concerns with being that close to other residents. And for this particular location, it's chosen because to interconnect a project of the size we're looking at, so that would be 50-megawatt, four-hour battery, we do need to interconnect to a 138-kV transmission line. And at that particular location with the substation, there is a 138-kV transmission line. And being adjacent to the substation as well, it's, already has the distribution capability in place, a variety of voltages, in particular this location, so that's attractive. And it allows for distribution across the province through the grid to help support fast frequency response grid-wide, and then for localized voltage support as well. So there are localized reliability impacts, as well as supporting the grid overall. So there's lots of different benefits from locating it here. And it is, in this location in particular, there isn't a lot of generating site, so it really does help manage the grid, particularly in this area of the province where we're looking to maintain that reliability. A couple of items around safety and environment. So safety is our first priority, both in our operation as well through project design, construction, and future operation. So we are ensuring that any safety requirements were included in our RFP, our design specification to begin with. We had a third-party expert in battery system help develop that specification. And on the environmental side, when we were looking at each site, there are some of the first team members that would come into the location. I'm sorry. I should have been looking at that more. They're the first ones in to screen it, and they would help identify where, to avoid the particular location, to avoid any wetlands and other concerns. And once in operation, it will be monitored from our Energy Control Center. They would be operating it as well as monitoring the site. And in particular, fire prevention is one of the key components of the design. And again, back to the subject matter expert in that area. And actually, as we're going through our evaluations, we do have them completing an NFPA 855 detailed review, and that's the Particular National Fire Protection Association Code for Battery Storage. So they're actually in the progress, in progress now, doing a detailed design review on that. There's some benefits in terms of local contractors that would be utilized at the site, whether it's for site services, prepping the site. We would look at having a student for each term that were in construction at this location. And I'll let Susan talk briefly about the community engagement.
Sure. So our community and stakeholder engagement is ongoing. This is actually kicking off our broader public engagement, is this meeting. We did, we are sending out a residential mail-out in the form of a postcard, just informing them of this project. So this would be the first time residents are learning about this. It is only a small sample of residents for the time being, just within a one-kilometer radius of where that site is located. But once we get through the RFP process, we have more details of the type of batteries, and we can get accurate renderings available for the public. We will be doing more broader outreach as well, and would love to come back to council when we have those details figured out. And of course, doing open houses when the times right as well. Mi'kmaq engagement is also currently ongoing, and we're having some productive conversations with the Assembly of Mi'kmaq Chiefs around the potential of partnership opportunities for these, not just for the Bridgewater site, but for all three sites. So those conversations are still ongoing. But we're really looking forward to really broadening our outreach for these. Public support is critical to make these projects happen, so, you know, we'd really appreciate the support of council and the community. We had some great conversations with Mayor Mitchell and with council, you know, a couple weeks ago. I feel like Bridgewater is, you know, they're not going to be a hard sell for projects like this. They are generally positive, and all of our conversations so far in the other areas too have been, have been really positive. And then looking down the road, you know, really looking at opportunities to engage youth and educate people on the benefits of batteries. As Deborah says in some of our meetings, they are the Swiss Army knife. They can do so many functions, and I think a lot of people think that they're only for one thing. So there's a real opportunity to kind of educate folks on the, on the broader benefits of these batteries, and how they're such an important step for that energy transition.
Okay, and just really quickly, just, these renderings are generic, but it's, the purpose is to give a feel for what the site will look like. And generally, again, the main components are shipping container size and feel of container, so just be multiple containers, side-by-side. Some of the fire protection code requirements are to have the spacing between the containers, so if there's an issue in one, it would not spread across the site. So that's been implemented over the last number of years, as the safety standards have improved. And if you go to the next one, that should give kind of the overall feel. Again, roughly the same size as a substation, and it's basically containers separated, and then you'd have a transformer and inverter shared between the containers. So pretty, pretty simple layout, and we would have our standard fencing with all of the appropriate high-voltage signage labeled for safety around the perimeter of the site. So that gives the general overall feel. Thank you.
Great to breeze through that.
Yeah, sorry.
There's a lot of information there, I know. Questions from council? I know we just kind of had this discussion, but are there any questions?
Not a question, a comment.
Yep.
I think this is exciting time for Bridgewater, and to fully support your project. And I see big opportunities for Bridgewater going forward. Once this project started, during the work on the project, and after completion, it's a win-win for us. So thank you for choosing Bridgewater as one of your sites.
Thanks, Wayne. And I was going to mention, but we ran out of time, that we appreciate that, what you shared when we met with you last time around reaching out to the fire associations when we do start to engage fire departments. So that has been noted, and we're including that in our strategy as well.
Great, thank you very much. I think it's important for us, we're, we have sustainability on our mind and on our agendas constantly. We want to do our part when it comes to a green transition. And so this is part of Nova Scotia Power's green transition, and so it is, it is important for our town to be a part of that. so it is, it is important for our town to be a part of that. So more information for the public will be coming from Nova Scotia Power. You said you've got a mail-out coming.
Yes, and I can share that too with councils, so you can see what that looked like. But that should be hitting mailboxes this week. And like I said, that's just about 38 residents, I think, that that includes. But that's really the first phase of this broader public outreach.
All right. Well, the public can stay tuned then. Great. Any final questions? I know a letter of support is, for this is on our agenda a little bit later.
Great.
Great, thank you.
That's all.
Moving on on our agenda, we have the minutes of May 23rd and June 5th, council meeting, special council meeting. Any errors or objections opposed? Hearing non-coven motion to approve the minutes circulated. I have Deputy Mayor Fager, seconded by Councilor Thorburn. All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you. Reports and recommendations. facade program funding recommendation from the Downtown Planning Advisory Committee.
So this is a recommendation to provide a $5,000 grant under the facade program to Greg Rayfus for 350 King Street. And the dispersment would be conditional upon submission of acceptable receipts for all materials, equipment, and labor required to undertake proposed work. There are a few sketches included with the package, and I think you can actually go along that portion of King Street, see the building that's presently being renovated. There's $25,000 that council generally allocates towards the facade grant program. And I believe with the award of this, the amount that is left over is noted in the report. There is $10,000 remaining for dispersment for other grant applications that have been received. The total value of the project cost for this is $10,000, so 50,000, or 50% of.
Any questions or comments on that? Clear straightforward. You see, King Street being spruced up, so the funds are being used wisely. Can I have someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Caldwell?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Downtown Planning Advisory Committee and provide a $5,000 grant under the facade program to Mr. Greg Rayfus for proposed building improvements to 350 King Street, which is our Nova Scotia. And that disbursement of funds shall be conditional upon submission of acceptable receipts, raw materials, equipment, and labor required to undertake and complete the proposed work.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. 9.2 is donation to the Firefighters Association of Bridgewater.
So council has a policy, the designated community fund, project fund policy, in which council will approve projects for receipt of donations upon which a charitable donation receipt is given. Council's policy indicates that council will decide the dispersment of the funds, but the intent is to enable organizations to raise funds for specific projects that they have. So these funds have been raised through donations, and they've been put into the reserve fund for, or the fund for, under the designated community project fund, with attention for the Firefighters Association of Bridgewater, for which the donations were received. And therefore, in accordance with the policy, council's in agreement, a nomination would be in order to approve the grant in the amount of $7,731.85 to the Firefighters Association of Bridgewater. Any questions on this?
Just one. Tammy, we must have quite a few groups that fall under this category, because I keep going through my mind, the curling gloves, the field gloves, and different ones that are using.
Tennis clubs, yeah.
Yeah. So it's important that the public know that we're here to assist the charitable groups with receipts.
Yeah. And in particular, where they haven't gone through that process of getting charitable status with CRAs, they're going to need them to raise funds and give those receipts.
With that, I can make the motion, wash it.
Just please.
I've moved that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve a grant in the amount of $7,731.85 from the designated communities fund program to the Firefighters Association of Bridgewater, in support of fire services within the Town of Bridgewater.
Thank you. Seconded by, that's a race. Councilor Caldwell, all those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. It is really a lot easier to not have to. And I'm not getting texts from my wife who says, "Stop spinning in your chair," because I do this all the time. Our next item is, just item for information, Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program, the monthly report for May. So we talk about this every time we have this report. So all our documents are there for the public on our website. So all the agendas, minutes, all the documents that we are going through right now are all listed there. So they're all there. And in there, you would find that this Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program has like 71 active clients, received 21 new referrals, and did 29 home site visits. Like, it's remarkable what they do with the resources they have. So we thank them for the work that they do, but also, if you want more information, you can look that up. Down to business arising, unfinished business, asset management policy and strategy.
Okay. At the previous council meeting, council gave notice that at the June 12th council meeting, council will consider, and if deemed advisable, approve an asset management policy and strategy. So included with the agenda and the request for decision is a draft of the asset management policy and strategy, as well as the governance structure, which forms part of the strategy and policy. So the asset management policy itself, which is the kind of the first overarching document, the key components of that policy are to set out the purpose, which demonstrates council's commitment to asset management, and thus to the town's assets, and directs the CAO to implement the asset management program. Sets that overall. Notes that the scope is to apply to all town assets, and assets of other organizations that town services are provided for. So an example of that would be the Public Service Commission in water, and our water infrastructure. The objectives are to manage asset risk, improve council's decision-making with respect to asset investment, manage lifecycle cost, and improve transparency. The principles under which the program we developed are service delivery, so you'll see that referenced a little bit later on in the strategy, long-term sustainability of town's assets, holistic and inclusive, fiscal responsibility, and innovation and continuous improvement. The policy sets out the roles, which are also set out in the governance structure as well. So the roles specifies that council adopts the policy. So you're the creator of the policy, establishes the oversight role for the CAO, and ensuring the implementation of the program, establishes a steering committee, which leads the implementation, and creates an asset management champion, which is, leads and organizes the steering committees. So you're seeing the governance structure, those roles have been assigned, and the rule of that. And the policy sets out the expectation that once adopted, we will be quarterly reporting to council by the CAO on the implementation of the strategy and the policy. And it states that the policy will be reviewed every, at least every 10 years, or as being necessary. So it could be sooner than that, if we deemed necessary to do so. The strategy is the document that says how we're going to implement the policy. And so it's not the detailed work plan, but it's the next step in getting to, getting to the work program. So it again sets out the scope, and repeats that it's assets of the town, or any of the organizations that provide service, that we provide our services through. It ensures strategic alignment with all of council's strategic documents and policies. The strategy does a SWOT analysis to gain an understanding of the business context. So you can see in the report that it highlights some of the strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats, and some of the actions that are being proposed, feed off those, to suggest what we may want to do. The strategy sets out that assets are to be aligned with service level expectations. So first step is documenting service levels, understanding what they are, ensuring that they have alignment with what council's expectations of service levels are, and stakeholders, and that we understand the assets that are required to deliver those services. So for fire inspection, it can be this facility, it can be computer equipment, it can be a truck. And so for engineering, it can be all of our linear assets, for sewer, and water, and roads, and sidewalks. So it depends on the service level that you want to establish, and then what assets go with those, so that we can ensure that we're maintaining those assets at the level necessary to continue to provide, to provide the service at the level that you expect. The strategy sets out that decisions are informed by data, as opposed to reactive responses. So when we're doing our capital budget and planning, that it's based on our asset management data and program, as opposed to other influences. It doesn't mean to say that you can't do new initiatives like park development, but you'll be doing those and making decisions about those, understanding your infrastructure needs and requirements to maintain your services. Targets will be set through service levels. And it also sets out some of the next steps in the key asset management initiatives. So there's a table in the, in the strategy, Table 10-1, as well as there's a table, I believe it's 12-1 and 12-2, that 10-1 looks at the FCM readiness scale assessment. And we, when we started this process, we rated ourselves as to where we were on that scale, which was at the very beginning. And there are, I believe, four or five steps through this scale. So what do we need to do to get to the next step in that scale? And then we'll continuously go through that. So the strategy outlines some of the things that we need to do to move ourselves up on that scale. If, and then, of course, the tables 12-1 and 12-2 identify some of our risks, and some of the opportunities. So it recommends tactics to address the risk, and it recommends actions to build off of the opportunities. So if council is in agreement with the policy and strategy, the next step would be to direct that we come back to council with a one-to-three-year roadmap. So we're not going to be able to do everything in those tables, all within one year, or even three, but it's the roadmap over the next three years, what will we strive to achieve, and what resources will be required in order for us to get there. So the steering committee would be the committee under the governance structure that would be tasked with providing, providing that. The strategy also sets out the roles and responsibilities, which are just a repeat of what is in the policy itself. The governance structure, which forms part of the asset management strategy, again, sets those roles out again. It does, it does really emphasize that council sets the policy, and receives the quarterly reports from the CAO. CAO provides the oversight and leadership, and then there's a committee. And that committee is made up of representatives from all departments within the organization. I appointed by myself as the CAO, so I have done that, just to go through this process. So we have the Director of Engineering, Director of Finance, Director of Community Development, the Manager of Environmental Services, which is Audrey for Water and Wastewater, the Facility Supervisor, so Kirk for his knowledge on the facilities, and the Engineering Service Manager, which would represent the public works side of things. The Steering Committee Chair is Director of Engineering. And then the governance structure sets out that there will be asset leads, that then, they're like the boots on the ground. They're the ones collecting the debt, determining the data to be collected, how it's collected, and what systems we're going to use to input that data and analyze that. And those asset leads will be led by staff who are involved in the maintenance of those assets, or the use of those assets. So it could be a wastewater supervisor, or a water supervisor, it could be a parks, public works supervisor that's involved in that. Council has approved the, an asset management coordinator position, and this was established in the 23-24 budget. And that individual, once recruited, will be key at providing support to the steering committee in the asset needs and the development of the program, and working with the committee and council at determining those service levels, and doing all that initial work to get us to the point of data collection. We've also included funds for asset management software, so that we can use the data that we collect in the long-term manner. So there's $119,000 we didn't know there in the budget this year, to see the commencement of the asset management program. So the next steps would be, if council's in agreement, is to approve the policy and strategy, and then give direction for staff to bring back a Terms of Reference for the steering committee, to set that out clearly. And then we would bring back a work program, one to three-year roadmap, and what it is that means, how to implement this. It's going to be an ongoing implementation, about what we're going to do over the next one to three years.
Sure, turn it on, turn it on.
Yeah.
Questions from council? I know you want to say something.
I was on a couple of the asset management courses early on. I think it's a great thing. Really, it will take a lot of guesswork when it comes to budget time, because you'll have documented facts that will support the work being done when it should be done. And it should make council's decision of the day a little more easier to make these decisions affecting the council.
Yeah. And one of the things the strategy does do is recommend the use of lifecycle costing, when you're looking at assets and investment in assets, is to understand that other side of it. So it's one thing to build the park, you have to maintain it, right? Or even if you build a new building, there's different maintenance costs associated with those things, and knowing what those are.
Well, I look at the massive amount of money we're going to have to spend to renew our wastewater infrastructure. And this will help reduce the risk of being in the situation we're in now, which is, you know, searching for money to pay for all these upgrades. So going forward, we should, in that sense. Any other questions from council? So do you, so the, do you need the motion also include the timeframe to return to council?
That would be ideal. I see, I didn't have that in the staff report, but that is going to be our next step.
Okay. Is someone prepared to make a motion, and maybe also include, and bring back a?
Terms of reference.
Terms of reference.
And a work program.
A work program.
For one to three years.
Okay. Someone would like to make that motion. Councilor Caldwell, thank you.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the new asset management policy, number 113, and the asset management strategy as presented in document 23-081 for the town, effective immediately. And that a work plan?
Will be one-to-three-year work plan?
Brought back to council. The one-to-three-year work plan will be brought back to council.
And the Terms of Reference for the steering committee.
Perfect, thank you. You got that. Yes, seconded by Councilor Thorburn. All right. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. All right. New business note, Scotia Power, grid-scale battery project, request for a letter of support. Yeah, so we had the presentation, council's had it now twice. I had it during NSFM, our economic development officer and I had that presentation as well. So lots of excitement around this, but they are requesting a letter of support. What is the wish of council? Councilor Thorburn?
I would move that council for the Town of Bridgewater agree to the request from Nova Scotia Power to provide a letter in support of a grid storage battery project, proposed for Bridgewater, to be located adjacent to the existing substation, located off of King Street.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. It does sound weird to say located off of King Street, when it's, the new access road is going to be off of St. Philip Street, and it's closer to St. Philip Street than it is to King Street. But as people hopefully saw in the presentation, it's like in the middle there. It's, I guess for now, the road is off of King Street. Right? We have a mover and a seconder. Any questions? Question being called. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Down to 11.2, surplus SCBA gear for the Bridgewater Fire Department. So there's a request in here.
Yeah. So council's policy 72 on the disposal of surplus equipment sets out how we're to dispose of surplus equipment, which normally involves a public tender, auction, or through donation to a registered charity. A donation that has an asset of more than $5,000 needs to be approved by council. So anything with a value of under five thousand, I can approve, but over five thousand, it needs to go to council. So the fire department recently just replaced their self-contained breathing apparatuses and equipment, so they have some surplus. My understanding is, is that, um, while they are older, there are some fire departments that could perhaps benefit from the use of them for the limited time that they, they have remaining in their life. And, um, they're requested from the fire department, given that the value, they can be, they feel it's up to, um, eleven thousand in value, ten to eleven thousand in value for the total package, that, um, they're requesting that they be able to donate that to local fire departments within Lunenburg County, so it would be spread, spread out a bit. Um, and if they're not able to find, they, they feel fairly confident that there are some fire departments that would love to receive this equipment. But if they're not able to find fire departments that can do that locally within Lunenburg County, that they be authorized to sell the remaining equipment that might remain left over from the donation to fire departments outside of Lunenburg County at the current market values.
Makes sense, any questions on that? It is what, it's what we do, right? With, with our fire equipment, we try to find somewhere where it can have a home in an extra life. It's mutual aid at its, at its best, I guess. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Fager.
Uh, yes, Your Worship. I'll move that town council for the town of Bridgewater, in accordance with policy seventy-two, authorize the Bridgewater Fire Department to donate the self-contained breathing apparatus and/or equipment to local fire departments within Lunenburg County and sell the remaining equipment to fire departments outside Lunenburg County at current market value.
Seconded by Councilor Caldwell, further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, we are down to the end. Uh, eleven point three, chapter one ninety-seven vending bylaw, retail vending.
So there's been a little, little, uh, bit of chatter, shall we say, um, and also phone calls to town hall, um, regarding some vending that had, had started to take place near playground. So we have a vending bylaw and the vending bylaw says what's vending and retail is vending as well as, um, food, you know, those types of things. And you can have a, a mobile vending, a truck or?
Truck or trailer.
Trailer that sells product, like, um, retail stuff, or it can, it can sell food. So we don't differentiate between, between them. And it also states where it can happen. And if you remember, just, um, during the pandemic, it kind of broadened that list to include most of our facilities, our, our, of our parks and open spaces. So right now, it doesn't say what's appropriate where, just that you can do vending and you can do it in these spaces. So there was some concern with the type of vending that was occurring near the playground. And when it was noted that in our bylaw, it's considered to be an allowable vending piece, um, the question was raised whether or not there was a need to review the bylaw to determine whether or not we feel it appropriate to perhaps put a little bit more parameters around what would be considered to be acceptable vending in close proximity to playground. For example, some may, may say that it wouldn't be appropriate to have alcohol sales, which is not to playground for, as an example, you know, um, or vending of materials that perhaps might be age-specific or age-appropriate for certain ages, but not others. Um, but our bylaw at this point doesn't really provide the opportunity to do that. There'd be some, some research involved in doing that. We'd have to ensure that certain rights are infringed and discriminating against certain uses. We have to, to give that some thought as well. Uh, but that is a desire and certainly that was kind of feeling from some of the discussions that were occurring last week. Staff would need some direction from council in order to start that, that work if, if it's something that council wants to do. We don't have solutions for you tonight simply because it does involve some, some thought and some work.
Yeah, I think we all heard from evil about a specific issue and so that's, we just have to kind of fine tune this a little bit. Any questions from council? Councilor Caldwell.
So I guess if this motion's approved, the next step would be staff does some research, comes back to council with some?
Options.
Options for us to consider.
Yeah.
We don't have to debate at this point what we'd like from staff to come back.
I think at this point, um, I think we have a good idea what the concern is in terms of the appropriateness of certain materials that are being sold. Um, and as I say, there's, um, a little bit of research that needs to go into that. We'll probably have to get some labor advice as well and bring that back. I think, I think we have a fairly good handle on what the concern is and those options will certainly provide you with a number of different ways that people will be achieving it.
Then we'll just, we can discuss it and for sure we'll be able to fine tune it even more if there's things that are missing or, or not, then we, for sure. Uh, is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Caldwell, thank you.
The town, I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to draft changes to chapter one ninety-seven vending bylaw with respect to retail vending for consideration by council at fifteen minutes.
Thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried, thank you. I'm not saying it's quicker when three people are away, but it's quicker.
Yeah.
See, I'm not the problem. I, it's, you know.
Still could be.
I blame Councilor Tanner just because, why not? All kidding aside, we are at the end of meeting. We have a in-camera meeting to discuss personnel matter after. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Deputy Mayor Fager, seconded by Councilor Caldwell, we are adjourned, thank you.